Now call this regular meeting in the Jacksonville City Council order. I want to welcome everyone who's come out to the meeting tonight, and also those who'll be watching the meeting on G10 television. To begin with, we're going to rise for the pledge of allegiance led by Council member Cindy Edwards, followed by the invocation by our city attorney.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have been called to pause again this evening to give you thanks, to give you thanks for this day that you have blessed us with, and for all the blessings that you bestow upon us as the city of Jacksonville, and upon each of us individually. As we enter another election season, we pray that each of us may would realize our need to vote, that that privilege along with the other privileges that we enjoy and share in a democracy were paid for by cost, lives were given, given and injuries suffered and sacrifices made. May each of us responsible citizens. We pray not only for those who have made those sacrifices, but those who are serving tonight, our service members here and afar away, and we pray for their anxious family. And we pray always for our mayor and for our council that your guidance and direction would be with them. All this we ask in your holy name. Amen.
Counsel, at this time I'd entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Second?
Any discussion here or none, all in favor, signify percent. Aye? All opposed. First session of public comment for this evening, and I want to ask the speakers, when you come up, if you would please use the podium on the right over here, because that one's not working properly right now, is my understanding. So if you'll come to this podium over here, and I'll start with Melanie Marzett. And before you start, before you start any time, I want to read this so we're clear with public comment. This is a time that the council was set aside during each regular meeting to hear comments from the public. This is not a question and answer session, but a time for you to express your views on city issues to the council. Each speaker who signed the public comment signup sheet may come to the podium when I call your name. Please state your name and address for the record, and you may speak for up to three minutes. When the timer at the podium, and also displayed on the screen turns yellow, that is a signal that there is 30 seconds of time remaining, and you may wish to begin wrapping up your comments. And with that, Ms. Marzett.
Okay. 403 Alta Vista Loop. I'd like to thank the council for hearing me out. Activism only works if you are active. I will continue to speak at council meetings hoping for change. I realize that it's an uphill battle, however, it's one I'm willing to fight. The way I was treated as an employee was horrible, and Susan Baptist should not be able to continue this treatment. However, the way that the city management handled this situation was worse. Instead of investigating to, instead of, let me calm myself down. Instead of investigating to find the truth, they decided to do a character assassination, which is nothing new in the black community. Make no mistake that my goal now is to garner state or national attention to this situation. I tried to work within this system. Unfortunately, it was more important to protect the city's reputation than to seek out the truth. There is no doubt in my mind that the truth will make it to the light. It's just a shame that I have to take this route to unlock the truth. Discrimination of any kind is cruel and unjust. To state that you are not racist is not enough. Your words need to line up with your actions. People should not have to fear losing their job to report discrimination. Training is crucial from management down. If you are in a leadership role and cannot explain or understand systemic racism, you need training. If you don't know what microaggression is, you need training. If you look around and there's no diversity, that's a problem. I made a conscious decision to put my job on the line after 24 years to stand up against racism. However, my ancestors put their lives on the line, so I owe it to them to continue to fight. James Baldwin said ignorance aligned with power is the most ferocious enemy justice can have. You all continue to sit over there as if you don't have a problem. You allow this man and this mayor right here to do whatever they wanted to me, and that's unacceptable. If you sat on the council seat, you were voted in. The job is to look out for the truth. I don't care what type of personal relationships you develop, you're supposed to be impartial, and that's all I ask for. I didn't ask for you to believe me. I didn't ask you to believe Susan. I asked for you to search for the truth, and you didn't. Like Mr. Carter said, he needed to protect the city. That mean cut me loose after 24 years and continue to let her do her reign. She has been a horrible supervisor, and that's all I have to say.
The second name on the list, you're going to have to excuse me, but I can't read it, is Kona, is that right?
Sauvanna.
Sauvanna, and the last name is?
Mosley.
Mosley, yes, sir. You'll state your name and address to the clerk.
I'm Sauvanna Mosley, 601 Walkins Wood Lane, Jacksonville. So I think the best way for me to address this is I, instead of getting up here and having a, I'm not going to complain, I'm actually going to just ask questions, and they're open-ended, because it's, it's actual. How can a permitted establishment in the city have several overdoses and deaths on the premises and still be open the next day with no consequences? How can a public official go on base and defame a business with zero cause, alleged gang, drug, and thugs, which is adjective word? How can a business sell alcohol until 4:00 to 5:00 a.m. with the city and the county and the city knowing and has been alerted? How can a business owner of color not get the same opportunities and chances as a white business owner? How can several business owners collude against other owners of color and the city still does not investigate the situation further? How can officers of the city blatantly lie on the chief of police and not be reprimanded, and the chief was notified of this accusation? How can a business owner of color be mocked several times by a public official when their business of almost 15 years has been vandalized and no apology issued, yet city officials have been made aware of the discrimination and the unprofessional remarks made? There are many, these are few of many cases that have been taking place in this city that I'm asking for. My wife and I are veterans in this city. My wife's 100% disabled veteran, and we both are people of color that did not originate of or have direct ties or roots in this city. We, we did not get a fair shake in the city in a different business that we ventured into. In the city that I've donated turkeys, school, school bags, free haircuts for the homeless, kids countless, community efforts, spent my time raising our kids, spoke at schools, and that we both defended. In my opinion, there has to be a change. My wife and I have researched, reached out, and obtained and secured legal counsel outside this municipality, because we, we just feel that nothing's, nothing's being done. And I just feel we'll no longer ask our oppressor to stop oppressing us. I think that, uh, that's the dumbest thing ever, like, no one asked your oppressor to stop oppressing you. I, I went to the assistant chief of police, I guess that would be his name, that would be Captain Kellum, adjacent to the chief of police's office, and spoke at these situations. These things, there's no possible way that you're a official of the law, you're not official of the law 24 hours a day. My wife and I opened up, we ventured into a nightclub business, and I know for a fact we did not get a fair shake. I've had a police officer making blatant accusations.
Let me hold you right there, time is running, but what I would like, what I would like for you to do, Mr. Mosley, is give Mr. Ray your contact information, so he can have a, discuss this with you, get more of the facts and everything from.
Who's Mr. Ray, sir?
The city manager.
Okay.
Can we do that?
No problem, absolutely.
We'd like to know more, though, okay?
You said, when I told him or to you?
To him.
Oh, yeah, no problem. Thank you, I appreciate you.
Yes, sir. Next, I have.
Reverend Leander Milton, 6608 Chatham Park Drive, Brandywell, Maryland, 206.3. Mr. Mayor and council, I stood before this council several months ago, asking that the Georgetown community have some infrastructure upgrades, which are long overdue. To date, there have been no conversations, nor has there been any movement on the request made several months ago. However, I watched attentively the city council meeting several weeks ago on G10 when Mr. Popkin and another, another business owner on the June Boulevard came before this council with their complaints about code enforcers, and how enforcing the codes was disenfranchising their businesses. Not only did they have the full attention of the council, but the energy and the urgent concern for their problem was met with resolutions and solutions. You, Mr. Mayor, said out of your own mouth, and I quote, "We've got to do something about this." I would want that same energy for Georgetown that you showed for Mr. Popkin and another business owner. We are taxpayers just as well as them. The only difference between me and Mr. Popkin and the residents of Georgetown and Mr. Popkin, we don't look like you. That's the only difference, sir. We pay taxes. We're not asking you anymore, sir. We're not going to ask you anymore. We're going to get what we pay for, from this council and from this city. It's long overdue. How dare you all sit here and act like you act, when we're suffering over there and you're taking our taxes, all of them spending them in other neighborhoods? How dare you do that? Mr. Popkin stood here, and I mean, he went in deep, and he had all of you all's attention. Every, I watched it. You did not put a timing of it on him, you did not stop him. Matter of fact, you all started talking about, okay, we need to do a study. You even did an NC DOT study for him, and you met his requirements, and we've been complaining for years, and we've not gotten your attention yet. You have not even stepped foot in Georgetown, sir. You don't know what the residents over there are going through, but you take their tax dollars and you do what you want to do with them. And you sit up on a banner that says you are a caring community, so you have a responsibility to all of the residents of the county and the city, not just to those who look like you. I watched the first two people that came, looked just like me with the same basic complaints. When are you all going to get it? When are you going to get it? This is wrong. This is wrong. We're not asking, we're demanding diversity and inclusion, especially in your hiring practices in this city. There's a 24-year veteran of this city sitting there, came in complaining, you just pushed off just now, told her to go sit down, basically. No one's hearing her. Something has to be done about this. When you have employees in this city that not only, not only, sir, not only have they been fired several times, but they have domestic complaints, domestic abuse complaints against them, yet you hired them. You hired them, sir. But this lady worked 24 years for this city. Where are the complaints against her? Where are they? Where are they? She doesn't look like you. That's the bottom line, sir. That's the bottom line. You all did a study with DOT, and I guarantee you've already met Mr. Popkin's request, have you not? You are promised funds to YMCA to build a pool in sports complex, and there are monies coming from the city, the county commissioners, the board of education, and the state. All of this is taxpayer dollars, of which the Georgetown people pay into. They will never be over at the YMCA or use that pool, but yet their monies are paying for that. But yet we can't get lights and roads and gutters and ditches and sidewalks in Georgetown. Come on, come on. Enough of this, really. All we're asking is that you give us the services that we pay for. We're not asking you to come and do any rebuild Georgetown, you're, they're already trying to do that. We're asking for the things that we need now. We asked you for a bus stop. Don't want us coming, look, even look, you came over there to placate us by putting little reflectors in the road, and almost got killed just this Sunday. Just Sunday, coming from church. I'm asking, why is it taking so long? What is the problem? What is the real problem, Mr. Ray? You just said, what's the real problem? What's the real problem, why we hadn't come to Georgetown and done what we said we would do? I can't remember, several months ago, nothing has been done, no conversations have been had, nothing, no study, no nothing, but yet, Mr. Popkin comes up and the very next week, you guys are moving. You're moving at the speed of light for him. What's the difference between him and I? What's the difference? What's the difference? You tell me what the difference is between him and I. I'll tell you if you don't want to say it. He looks like you and I don't. And I don't. And enough of this is enough, Mr. Mayor. You guys are hired by the taxpayers. Taxpayers pay your salaries. It's high time you guys start acting like that. Not only that, I'm asking again for diversity and inclusion. Dr. Washington put a motion to the floor, the last time I was here, for diversity and inclusion. There was a 2016 study did for diversion, diver- and inclusion in this city. I would ask the question, what have you guys done since that study? What changes have you made? The recommendations that were given to you all, what, what changes have you made? I'll answer the question for you, none.
All right. I've been generous with the time, I gave you the two extra minutes.
Thank you. Thank you, I appreciate it. Can, can you also help us out?
Also.
You also help us out with the issues that I brought to you?
If you'll sit down, I'll, we'll talk about it. Mr. Ray, you sent an email in November, I believe it was.
Mayor, part of Reverend Milton's comments that were brought to the council in November, and we did respond back to five different issues, including emergency access, to street lighting, sidewalks, and street paving. We responded back to those in November. I sent it to the Georgetown community email that was provided to me, and I.
And you did, sir.
And I got some individual feedback, but just for like the street lighting, we didn't get any response back. What happens on the street lighting, it's a simple process that we set up as a staff. You submit the request, just submit it to our team, we do a review, we haven't had any follow-up on that one. So our team, we checked again today, we haven't had any request to show which areas of the community we want to look at. We have set up the emergency access point that was requested, so in case there was something that happened, and we are looking at streets. We responded with the streets that have been repaved, three streets, one for this year, three previously in terms of larger, and then the project to look at securing additional right-of-way. We're, we're looking at that project now, as you know, Mayor, that takes the planning, that takes the property owners, and so we'll have to bring together property owners to start acquiring right away, just like any other project that we would do in terms of street projects. So I think there's a lot of good work going on with the requests that have been made, and, and it's going to take the commitment of both the staff and the community to make these things happen.
Would you think it would be appropriate to maybe set up a meeting with Reverend Milton?
That'd be great. I sent that email just this afternoon, after talking to Mr. Jackson, to Reverend Milton to say, if we want to have a sit-down discussion, and Mayor, we could schedule that between your schedule and Reverend Milton's schedule, we can bring it together, any other members of Georgetown, have that active dialogue, and not have a shorter time limit on it, if that works for Reverend Milton.
That'd be fine, sir. All we want to do, sir, is see some changes in Georgetown, is asking for a few changes. That's been remote. That's a reasonable request.
If you send me some dates, we'll make it happen. And next week is great. Thanks, Mayor.
All right, so. We have some minutes from the February 6, 2023 workshop, and also four consent items. I'd entertain a motion to adopt and approve.
Move approval of the minutes and the consent items as presented.
Second. Any discussion? Here or none, all in favor, signify percent. Aye? All opposed? Okay. First item on the agenda for tonight is the sports and events complex update.
Mayor, we're going to do a presentation to the council. We have Jason Galloway with McAdams, he's our project lead, and Anthony Prins is our staff project lead. We're going to walk through an update to council that will show you the work that we've put together now on the sports and events complex. If you recall, we're working on two tandem projects, the Parks and Recreation Master Plan and the Sports and Events Complex Conceptual Plan. So as we're moving down those parallels, this is the first presentation you'll get to the council, and then hopefully at the next council meeting, we'll have the master plan. These two things work symbiotically, and so they're very important for how we look at how we're going to move forward. The beauty of this presentation is it shows the 400 acres that the council purchased to create a different type of atmosphere in this community that focuses on the needs of the community, the process that we've gone through, and, and Jason's going to walk you through the process and the findings of that, and then the concept. So without further, it's all yours.
All right. Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to discuss this project with you. This is exciting for us, and it's been quite a, quite a journey to get us to this point, so excited to share this with you. So the first step in this project, and the first step in, in most of our public projects, is to listen. We want to make sure that we're providing the services that the community needs, that we're not making any assumptions, and that we're providing all the necessary services and supporting uses for the property. So we went through a community engagement process that consisted of doing some outreach, both through the National Night Out, a couple of open houses to garner information and input from the community at those events. We also had a sports and tourism market study completed by Victus, and we also sent out a, an ETC survey, which is a statistically valid survey, sent out at random across the community to get recreation input from a statistically valid portion of the community. What we heard from that, as you can see in this word map in the top right-hand corner, is a need for indoor recreation. That's a big need among the community. It gets hot in the summer, people need a place indoor where it's nice and cool to work out, go for walks, and play sports, and it's cold in the winter, so it serves two seasons there. What we found out in, in regards to the regional needs coming out of the sports and tourism market study, was that there's a big need regionally for tournament facilities. So this is not just necessarily for the city of Jacksonville, but for the whole region. So that provides opportunities for tourism and economic growth. What comes along with these tournament facilities are some supporting uses, so also a need for other types of entertainment and shopping, restaurants, hotels, those sort of things. The next thing we heard was a need for indoor event space. That's for local meetings, military balls, those sort of things. There seems to be a deficit in the community for that. And then, before I go down to the concerns, just a couple of other items that kind of showed up in our word map was amphitheater, sports, wellness, those sort of things kind of ran across all of our community input. Some concerns that we heard as part of this outreach was traffic and access. There's already a existing single-family residential in the area, so making sure that this facility does not negatively impact the traffic, and then just making sure, just in general, we don't impact those neighborhoods surrounding the site, both noise, trash, those sort of things. So concerns were heard, and we move forward with the, with the project accordingly. Jumping right into it, this is our development plan. This is the plan that we came up with. I'm going to go through things step by step, starting out with some of our site constraints and what drove our decisions, and then we'll kind of go through the site piece by piece, and kind of talk about each as an individual item.
Jason, if we could, I hate to interrupt you, but we've got some folks watching at home who may not necessarily be familiar with the site. So, so if we could, just a quick description as to where we are. You can see the word Western Boulevard there, that's going out, Western Boulevard towards Gum Branch. The residential neighborhood there underneath the Western Boulevard letters, that's Williamsburg Plantation, and then to the west or to the left of that is the site that, that we have purchased, and it backs up to the New River, so, sorry for interrupting, please.
That's great. All right, so talking about the site constraints. The first site constraint is access. The only access we have that's not residential street is from Western Boulevard, that's that large circle here. We also have a couple of additional residential points of access, so it's really a limited, as far as vehicular access to the site. So that's one site constraint. The other is the existing residential that surrounds the site to the east, so that we'll have to work around some of those existing conditions there. We also have transmission easements, so there's two Duke, two Duke easements, one on the north side, and another that travels from, from southwest to northeast. There's also a gas line easement included in that space. So quite a few environmental features on the site on the west hand, west side, close to the New River. Most of that area is in floodway or floodplain, it's also very wet, quite a few wetlands, so not great for development in terms of, of building upon that space. Also, throughout the site are some streams and wetlands, you see those depicted with those blue lines, and we'll have to work around those as we move forward with the project. All right, so as we go through this development plan, we'll start over here on Western Boulevard as you access it, coming from Gum Branch. So we'll, we'll head into the site, we'll stop at each one of these locations and kind of talk about what our vision is for these spaces. So again, coming in from Western Boulevard, there's a, there's a feature right at the entrance to give you a sense of arrival. Right now, we're showing it as a traffic circle, but that could be any sort of community feature. And as you come in, you're going to reach some townhomes, townhomes or multifamily. As you transition from the single-family into the community, we want to make sure that transition is cohesive, it makes sense, and going from single-family into multifamily residential seems to make the best sense from a zoning perspective, and a good transition from one use to the other. And there's different types of townhomes, different types of multifamily, just a few images here about how that may be addressed in the project. The other, the other thing we want to make sure that this project does is creates weekday activation. The space is going to be well-used on the weekends, but what happens Monday through Friday. So adding some townhomes and residences inside the complex creates that, that weekly vibrancy and activation in the space. I would to move further into the site, we come to a commercial recreation area. This is right now just reserved for uses. What we heard in our community outreach was there's need for family entertainment in the community. This would also supplement the sports and events center that we had proposed, we'll talk about in just a minute as we move further into the site. But right now, we're holding space for that, we're not exactly sure what that is. There's been a couple of different things thrown out there, ropes courses, water parks, adult amusement space. So saving this for later, this would be a partnership with some sort of private entity. As we move further into the site, we're reaching a mixed-use district. This is a type of district that mixes residential, commercial, restaurants, shopping. This use is to, is to really the core. This is your hub for your wheel that spokes out to these other types of uses. We see a lot of vibrancy in this space. So I'll show you some, some, some images here of what this could be. This creates a destination. This brings people from Western and Gum Branch into the community. It creates a space for gathering, for social interaction, things to do, weekdays, weekends, that sort of thing, and it also complements the other uses in the sports center, and it meets some additional commercial and residential needs in the community. All right, this is another image, this is conceptual still, so we're still working out some of the details, but if we look at this, we're going to have a sports and events center anchoring one side, a potential hotel on the other, and in between, it's a main street. So there's all your shopping, all your restaurants would be on this main street, nice access between the two uses, really complimentary. And then right across the street from the mixed-use district is the sports and events center. Sports and events center fulfills that big need we just talked about for indoor recreation. It can be used locally for basketball games, volleyball games. It's a meeting and event space for military balls, it's for local HOA meetings, however that use may be, may be need, whatever use may be needed in that situation. It's also your tournament facilities. This, this drives tourism. You get people coming in from all over, you know, within five hours to drive in and participate in basketball and volleyball, and that brings visitors to the area to shop, eat, spend the night, so it brings. the night, so it brings quite a few tourism tourists to the area and helps with economic development. Then we have an amphitheater. This amphitheater is a complimentary space to the sports and events center. Right now, we're proposing 5,000, 7,000 seats. It's an additional entertainment option. This goes along with providing more family-friendly entertainment in the community. We have some images here, back set, as you're kind of looking out over this amphitheater. You have the trees in the background, you've got the New River and some wetlands behind it, so it's a really nice space for concerts, plays, TED Talks, whatever it may be for this space. And then as we move across, there's a stream that bisects the site. As we move across, we end up to the outdoor fields and tournament complex. The reason it was located here is this is the largest space with one continuous piece of property. So this is the largest use land-wise. We wanted to put all of the fields in one location that helps with tournament use, so this is the area that made the most sense for this facility. This has eight full-size soccer, lacrosse, multi-use fields, and to accompany that is one championship field, so nine fields total. This meets your local fields' needs and also the regional needs for tournaments, so this complements the sports and events center right across that stream. And then again, this is touching on the tourism and economic development, helps bring people into the community. So this is another conceptual rendering of that, kind of showing the relationship between the playing fields, championship field in the middle, and you've got your sports and events center right across the stream. And then the amphitheater is located also in this area. So quite a lot going on here. Everything's complimentary. And then talking about other recreational needs in the community, trails was another major need in the community. So in these areas that are in wetlands and in floodplain, using those for hiking trails, for nature trails, hiking, we also have some bike trails underneath those easements, so we really want to use the space to its biggest and best use. Don't want any space to go to waste, so providing that public outdoor recreation is very important as well. So again, the trails, we're really trying to maximize areas that we wouldn't be able to develop in any other way to give people access for nature and for wellness. So taking a look at this, this is the full rendering that we're showing for the concept, showing the sports and events center with the mixed-use core, the residential, and then the athletic complex, and the amphitheater kind of then back towards the water.
I'm sorry, go ahead, but before you move on, please.
I meant to note here, this one, we have great access to the New River, and really want to make sure we maximize that. So there is water access. I missed that, but I just want to note that there is access to the water, and that's quite important.
We're not quite ready for that. We are going to show you a cost estimate, but before that, let's talk about intent. First of all, I just want to say thank you for being patient with us as we've gone through this process. As you can tell, the McAdams team, along with Victus and Sage Design, they've done an excellent job. Really, we've taken the site that has many constraints, and of course, most sites in Onslow County have many constraints. So I don't want you to feel that we bought a piece of property that's not as useful maybe as you thought it was. All of them are like this. So what we've done here through this planning process, we figured out a way to maximize the return, okay? And Jason went through all of those, all of those different attributes of it, but if we could focus on intent, the intent of at least our approach is for us to make a new kind of forward-leaning community for Jacksonville. You know, you see a lot of these new types of mixed-use communities in other places, and they're very successful. You know, a lot of people like to go there and visit, they like to go there and live, and that's one of the concepts that we want to explore here. But before we get into cost, let's talk about what the city plans to do and what we would lean on the private sector to do. And I'd be remiss if I didn't talk about public-private partnerships because our finance director is very sensitive about that, and rightfully so, so I just kind of want to clarify how we might go about doing some revenue recovery and what we intend to do on our own. So the events center, the amphitheater, and the athletic complex, those are certainly things that we are going to do as a city. Now, if we end up with partnerships from the county or from the Sports Commission or, you know, the state, whomever comes to the money to help support that, that's wonderful, but we're not going to lean on the private sector to make that happen, okay? However, when you flip over to the residential development, whether it be the multifamily, whether it be the mixed-use, whether it be the commercial entertainment area that Jason mentioned, those are things that we're not going to do as a city, okay? Those are revenue recovery options because we own the property. And guess what? If we lean forward on the sports and events center and on the athletic complex, that property's going to become more valuable, and it's going to become more appealing for private development, which is what we would like to see occur shortly thereafter. So we don't envision ourselves getting into the residential development market, the commercial development market. However, we do see those as good sale opportunities to help us reduce our overall cost for the project. So, please.
All right. So how much is this going to cost? How much do we need to budget? So what we've done is looked at the site in the first phase to meet the most pressing need, which is the indoor sports and events center. So we've kind of gone through, we've had a professional estimate done, and we've extrapolated these numbers, and to get to the site, to get to the sports and recreation center, the parking that's associated with it, and the grading, we recommend budgeting just over $100 million. So that gets you the sports and events center and all your site improvements and roadways to the site. The second pressing need was also include the sports, the outdoor sports and tournament area. So for $155 million, we can get those fields as well, and that also includes the additional infrastructure, parking, and utilities to get us there.
So there's no two ways about it. The cost is high. However, the cost of construction is high right now, but one point that I want to make here is that while we have an estimate in front of you, that estimate can go either way, you know, up or down. It really depends on the details and how we plan to execute the plan. So for instance, say the sports and events center, you know, if you want to build something that's got a real impressive architectural design, you know, with lots and bells and whistles to it, that's going to end up costing more per square foot than something that you might see in another place that's essentially a metal corrugated structure that just has, you know, covering and HVAC for tournaments. So the point there is, is that we have some numbers on the screen, but as we move forward, and we hope that we're moving forward shortly, you know, right after this meeting, as we move forward, we can calibrate on where we want to invest at a higher level, where we would want to invest at a lower level, and then of course, how we go about phasing this project to make it attainable.
Quick question. All right. When you're talking about the clearing, grading, the parking, the roadways, and the utilities, all this would be set up to be able to accommodate future private development also? Or would it be additional down the road?
Can we go back to the site plan? Yeah, to, what we're trying to do is to, is to get multiple uses out of the same parking. I don't know an eloquent way to say that, but that's really what we're trying to do. So for instance, let me look this way. Let's see. You see that green area there between the amphitheater and the event sports center, the event, sports plus event center? You know, that's an overflow parking area that we intend to serve both of those facilities. Same thing with the paved parking facilities that adjoin both of those buildings. We want them to serve both of those buildings. At some point, when we get into the commercial piece of it, the mixed-use piece of it, we envision some structure parking that would support the entire development as it builds out. Some of the areas are not going to be able to share parking though, and it's based upon location. So for instance, the athletic complex, you know, it's separated from everything else by, I wouldn't say a significant distance, but a long-walking distance. So that's going to have to have its own standalone parking, but the intent is to drive down the overall cost by having shared parking where we can.
Mayor, and on the utility, just the water and the sewer and the streets, we would build the systems that connect the facilities and the multi-use concept, and then when the private development comes in, looking at the residential, both on the left and the right side, they would be responsible for extending those utilities. So our teams would basically create the service lines, the large transmission lines, and then they would bring the service lines off of that as part of their development. That's where that public-private partnership that Anthony talked about earlier, that's how that would work out. So not only would they purchase the land, they would also have their standardized development cost moving forward. So as Mr. Warden has pointed out before, completing the entire site on city funds would require a larger input, but for us to create service lines to the facilities that we're building as we bring in those partners, the goal and the vision is to be able to kick off our development and then bring others along in the process so that they can, they can do the same type of development on their infrastructure and then move on to the facility construction.
Okay, let's go, let's go back to the estimate so I can explain a little bit why this is a good planning number, but it is certainly not one that we would bank on, right? So when you look at clearing and grading, utilities, site improvements, those are based upon just a per-acre assumed cost. They're not based upon a design. So if you think about, you know, the whole concept of, unfortunately, I have to buy a car very soon, like within the next two days. So when I look at what kind of car I want to buy, if I say I just want to go buy a car, the cost could be $100,000, it could be $5,000, well, $10,000, let's just say that. That's kind of where we are right now. However, if I said I want to buy an SUV and I want it to be a Toyota and a 4Runner, you can get it really honed in into what the actual cost is. So hopefully that made sense. Right now, we're dealing with just very generalized numbers to get us to a ballpark number.
Question.
Sir?
It's exciting to think about it being developed. Has there been any thought about the population that would reside within the area itself as well as the population would be served by the athletic facilities? I'm concerned overall about, unless I'm missing something, only one entrance, exit?
Yes. So can we go back to that, please?
That seems like a limitation on development.
It is. And in the final slide, I'll show you what the next steps are, but just to illustrate your point a little bit more, that is a concern for us too. Yes, please. The dots that were shown there are our access points. One of them was large, one of them was not. Fortunately, we've got a ways to go backwards. Here we go. Okay. So the Western Boulevard access, that can ultimately be a four-lane divided connection if we so choose. The right-of-way's 200 something feet wide, I think, okay? So for a primary access, that's wonderful. However, depending on what the densities are in the residential development plan as well as the mixed-use development plan, and of course, how we schedule the programming on everything else, that could easily become overburdened, okay? The smaller dots there are residential subdivision access points, which we very likely would not use for primary access. So if we wanted to do bicycle pedestrian access for the neighborhood residents, you know, so that they could get in that way, reduce the number of cars, and also, we've talked to the fire department and police department about having emergency access points there so that not every day, but in the event something happens, we could use those access points to get in there. That's going to be especially important if you look at that northernmost access point that connects right into the sports complex, the rectangular fields. So unfortunately, a byproduct of that type of activity is injury, and if we allow that for emergency purpose, for purposes, excuse me, emergency purposes, that's a more direct connection than going all the way around the horn to get to the, to the facility the other way. One thing that we are talking about, however, can you go to where we see the easements? Jason? Nope, forward, there you go. Okay, so this shows the right-of-ways for the power lines and the gas line that Jason mentioned. Question is, can we get another connection back out to Gum Branch Road through the Duke power line easement that would help alleviate some of that bottleneck traffic onto Western? We're investigating that. We're not far enough along yet to give you a full understanding of what might be involved, but that's part of our due diligence.
Mr. Mayor, Jason, thank you for bringing this information forward, and thank you, Anthony. I know this has been, with a couple of council members, months of work and research. They're big numbers, and they're big ideas, but how do you eat an elephant? One bite at a time. Yeah. This will, the potential here is that we can address some of the challenges our community has been facing economically, as well as in recruitment and retention for not only jobs, but doctors and surgeons and other things that we need for quality of life, as well as the venues and opportunities for cultural arts and other kinds of entertainment options. Our Joe Ed partners recently started talking about economic leakage. Instead of just trying to bring industry to Jacksonville without a deep-water port, a highway connector, or a railway line, that's challenging, they started talking about how much money we're losing every year to Wilmington for entertainment and shopping, or to Raleigh or New Bern for downtown experiences, concerts. I mean, you know, my family drove to Raleigh to see the Trans-Siberian Orchestra in December. We've been, you know, if you want to do something like that, it rarely comes to Jacksonville simply for lack of a venue. So the leakage we're experiencing is all of the tourism tax, hotel nights, restaurant stays, those are dollars that can stay here, and even, you know, Jacksonville could be a draw instead of the vacuum in this. We could start drawing from other communities around us to come to concerts and events and things here. That brings dollars into our community that we don't have to pay. Our tax dollars are finite. We pay sales taxes and property taxes, and we're only going to get so much out of ourselves. If we can bring tourism dollars in, that's money that we get to add to for things we need like infrastructure, which takes 15 years to get in place and costs millions of dollars. So it can really help us to build the value long-term, and then it solves some of the things that I know I have heard, and I have been a complainant, I will say, I have heard other citizens complaining about, including myself, that there's, you know, nothing to do here entertainment-wise. There are a few options, not knocking the businesses that are here and the folks that are working very hard to give us some creative opportunities, but there's just not a scale place for them to thrive. And so creating this, you know, like I said, one bite at a time, it's an elephant, one bite at a time, but it does address several things, and over the long haul can really turn into not an expense, and it's an investment, and it will see return for our community, tangible and intangible, I believe. Quality of life, you know, if you ask the hospital CEO what the number-one challenge she has for recruiting and retaining qualified surgeons and doctors for our community, it's that there's nothing for their family to do here outside of the sports programs we have. They're just our limited options. So this begins to expand our attractiveness for more than just dollars. It gives us fun things to do. It also gives us attraction power for bringing tourism dollars and good doctors and surgeons, keeping them here. And, you know, we talk about wanting our kids to come back home, right? Maybe they'll want to come back to Jacksonville and leave here, come back to Onslow County and leave here. and leave here. This is part of making that a really good idea. So I value this process. I don't have all the dollars or answers yet either, but one bite at a time, I'm with you.
Donations.
There you go.
Anybody who's interested. Yeah, just to follow on your point there, the whole time we've been working on this project with McAdams, the focus has been on dual purpose, okay? Dual purpose means the recreational needs of our community, and then the economic development opportunity that we could get through sports, tourism, and events, et cetera, okay? So when we talk about recreation, these types of facilities generally get their recreation, local recreation benefit Monday through Friday. Well, some Fridays. Let's just say. Monday through Thursday, right? And then the tournaments or whatever events end up coming in Friday, Saturday, Sunday. So that's typically how they operate, and they can serve dual purpose. One thing that's come up lately, when we talked about the scope of the facility itself, is, you know, how big do you build it? What does it need to contain within? One of the things that we talked about were high school graduations. You know, the entire time that I've been here, I've heard people say, well, it's going to rain this year, so I get two tickets to go to the graduation and the gymnasium. And, you know, in that case, you got to pick and choose who goes. So with a facility like this, it fills a community need where that space doesn't currently exist today. So economic development, local recreation, all of the, both of those have been in the forefront. So if I could, media friends, would you mind helping us fast forward so we don't have to go through each of the individual slides? Let's go to the very last slide, if you don't mind. So if there are no additional questions, and of course, this is not the last time that we're going to talk about this, we do feel that this is the litmus test to make sure that we're on the right track, and what we're proposing is something that you're comfortable with continuing forward in concept. So I mentioned that we don't have enough information to come up with the great numbers on the cost estimate, and it's because this is just a concept plan. So what we would like to do is move forward with what we're calling Phase Two of the Planning and Engineering piece of this. We've done a lot of planning. This is where we start getting into more detailed site evaluation to determine what we can build, what we can't build. So we talked about the traffic study. We're going to have to do an evaluation to see what the carrying capacity of this site is, and we're going to have to plan towards that over the long term. It may go up in density, it may go down, but we're going to do that knowingly. Soil testing, of course, where it is, we need to make sure that the soils can structurally support what we want to build out there. Not every soil in Onslow County is capable of supporting a three-, four-story building, you know? And if the soils out there cannot, and it has to be undercut and backfilled, that's a large expense. That changes the performer of the development plan. We're working with a commercial broker out of Wilmington to figure out what type of commercial activities should go in there, okay? And then what does that mean from a cost recovery standpoint? You know, again, just furthering the project as a whole from an engineering perspective and a costing perspective. We have spent a good amount of time with our friends Ryan and Jeremy talking about the planning piece of that. It will have to come before a city council has a planned unit development because the current zoning is not flexible enough, maybe that's the right word to say it, to allow everything that we want to do out there. So we will have to consider a planned unit development approval. Financial model, in the very near future, our friend Sabrina's going to come and talk to us about, you know, how we may go about paying for some of this. And at that time, we'll continue, we'll maybe consider more of the cost recovery piece, too. Just depends on how much of that information is available at the time. But ultimately, what we want to get to is design and permitting. Once we get to that point, then we're off and running, and we can give you a timeline on when we might actually see this stuff out there. Again, thank you for your time and your patience with this process. Hopefully, all of this has paid off, and this is something that you can really get behind. The cost is something we'll figure out. We'll refine it as we move forward, but we feel that there's a great amount of due diligence done here, and it's something that we can, that we can, that we can be proud of as a community. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, Dave. All right, with that, we'll go to the report section for the night's meeting, and I'll start with Mr. Jackson.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I'd like to mention that I was invited to the Youth and Government YMCA event in Raleigh on last Friday. We had a delegation from Jacksonville Senior High School that did a mock presentation of a court, and one of the young folks up there, Mr., the name, well, the name of all of them, let me see, was Teddy Taylor. Name's right. There we go. Gabby Dmitrievova, Teddy Taylor, Jackson Bridges, Adam Stanley, Jackson Kaiser, and all of those were sophomores from Jacksonville High School, and Mr. Teddy Taylor was the best attorney at the event. They were the only ones that came from our county. Carteret had two busloads, and Craven had a number as well. So we just got to try to support these young people as they go forward. They do mock lobbying, they do, like, the legislature, like, they're working on bills and stuff of that nature. It's great experience for them, and they run most of the sessions. But very, you got the adults there that's kind of helped guide them, but they take care of the business. So it gives our kids a lot, a great opportunity, so going forward, we got to support our kids. I mean, we got to look at what we're doing with the, our youth council, as well as other kids in the community. Matter of fact, Teddy Taylor was at one time on the youth council, but because of his schedule, he couldn't stay with it. But he's moving forward and working towards being the lawyer that he said he wanted to be. Also, this is Black History Month, as they say, so-called Black History Month. I say Black History Month, like other histories, every year, all year, every day, all the time. But it's more than just the notion. It's more than just an idea. History is taught so we can avoid the mistakes of the past. We got to live it, you know? Had the African-American Read-In, which they do every year. One thing I wanted to do that didn't happen, and regardless of what's going on in our community, Melanie Marzette was deeply involved in it for years, and I appreciate, I'm sure other people in the community appreciate what she did with that program for the years. I know other people started it, but I know she was a major player in that, to the point where even last year, she had me be a part of it. So I appreciate her on that. But it's been brought up. We have issues in our community like other communities. It was mentioned that some of us left here because there were certain things that wasn't here. There were certain things that wasn't here, and some of those things have been difficult to change. But as has been said before, we got to demand it, and we got to do it. You know, we got to do it together. We got to get some understanding of what's been going on, communicate about what's been happening, and address it. We ain't trying to make you feel guilty about nothing. We just want to talk about it so we all get a better understanding, so Jacksonville can move as one city forward. Thank you.
Mr. Sosin.
No reports. Happy to be here, thank you.
Mayor's Proketa Bittner.
No reports this evening.
Dr. Washington.
Yes, I have more of a comment and a question. I think about two, maybe it's been about a week and a half ago, I sent an email to Mr. Carter and to the council, and to Mr. Ray and Mr. Massey with regards to the University of North Carolina School of Governance, having a DEI upcoming seminar training in May, and it is an online course, and wondering if the council would be willing to participate in that, as well as our leadership within the city. But something else I'm considering that would be probably something even better. I think approximately two years ago, the city partnered with Marine Federal to bring Mr. McPherson to talk about the third option, and I'm wondering if there's a possibility that the city can partner with Marine Federal and to have this upcoming training with the School of Government offered to our leadership, our council, and supervisor, and possibly some members of the community.
As I responded to your email, I did look online at the presentation. The School of Government, it is online, it is, it indicates it's for elected officials and professionals, which I indicated I thought certainly was the mayor and council, myself, Mr. Ray, and Mr. Massey, clearly. But I wanted to, it is on May the 10th. It's $520 per person for the online presentation, but they do give a 20% discount off the registration fee if there's a group of five or more. And like indicated in that email, if there is an interest, the mayor and council, we would certainly be able to get a room, and you could do this by watching it, all of you together, or whoever was able to come if you wanted to do that, and we would make all the arrangements here for lunch, et cetera. But I don't know anything about Marine Federal, but I'm just saying, the mayor and council, it seems like this would be a great opportunity for them to experience it. And let me say one other thing, and Mr. Ray and I have had this conversation, and I think you know how I feel about the School of Government. I mean, my wife and I both have made contributions to them over the years. They have been so good to me as a professional and to carry on my job as city attorney. They are a nonpartisan organization. They're not interested in advocating for one side or the other. They're interested in professional development. They have been a go-to resource for me and the many things, whether it's planning, or whether it's, I'm sure the finance, et cetera, they carry on. And in fact, next Thursday and Friday, I'll be in Chapel Hill at our mid, what we call a winter conference, but it'll be put on by the School of Government. They are a great asset to this state, just like the league is to the state, and I would encourage you, as many as could participate, for you to, as a council, mayor and council, to participate in this without bringing others in at this moment in time. Because I think this is something that y'all kind of need to do as a body, since you're going to be addressing it, and then you can see how it may go from that. But I think this is a great opportunity for y'all as a body to look at it, and like I said, I'd be glad to be there, and Mr. Massey, I'm sure, and Mr. Ray.
Also, Mayor, can I, I talked to Rose Von, Rose Von Williams.
Yes.
With the North Carolina League of Municipals Executive Director, she said she, they will be willing to bring something out here, too, concerning DEI. We talked to them.
They do have a program that I, the name.
Called the Direct Program.
Direct Program, that's correct. They have their own program, but it's kind of.
It's based off the National League of Cities.
That's right.
But there's some parameters to it, et cetera. I mean, but again, we could certainly see. I think some of these programs are training the trainer, so you can go and then carry it to the community. Others are, we'll train everybody. But again, we need to get more of the details, exactly how that was set up. As I recall, looking at it a while back, it has some parameters to it.
Yeah, she said this, we could figure out a way to make it work for the city.
Yes, correct.
I'll just, community announcement, public service announcement, if you will. The Chamber of Commerce partners with Coastal Carolina Community College to do a Trades Day every year. It is March 1st this year. Competition starts at 8:30 in the morning and runs till 11 o'clock, so it's the kind of thing you could stop by if you could give it an hour or 30 minutes. If you've never been to Trades Day, this is a phenomenal way to support some of the youth in our community. They are out there doing masonry, woodworking, electrical. They frame in and will wire in, like a mini-house, with all the light switches and outlets and everything. These are really, the things these kids can do are phenomenal, and this is the best of the best, competing against one another, and it's a whole lot of fun to see them work. I got kind of tickled when the girls won the masonry part, just saying, yay, girls, one of the years. We kind of got to cheer for some of the girls in the masonry. You don't often see them hauling those big old concrete blocks around and swinging a mud paddle, but they were doing a great job, and it's just fun to see. So if you can make it by on March 1st to see our kids at work, they're learning trades, you can make a whole lot of money with a good trade skill, and without college debt, how about that? So the trades are really important for our future. Just another PSA, we have had some discussion today and at other times about communities and serving all communities, which is incredibly important. One of the things that, you know, in this meeting, some things are known and some things are not known, some things are said on record, and some things happen after the fact and nobody gets to hear them. The businesses on Western, we do not have the authority or the budget to commission a North Carolina Department of Transportation study. They would have to do that. What we did do is make a phone call, say, do we have any authority to do anything in this situation? And the nutshell version was, nope, you don't. So the businesses were, you know, we heard their concerns, they met with, you know, staff, management, and then management reached out to the state and asked the question, is there anything we can do to help these businesses stay alive now that you've commandeered their entire parking lot, really? And the answer was, no, the state law would have to be changed by the Department of Transportation itself. So just, so you know, the other half of the picture, there was concern and response, but the response was a phone call and a no, because that's all we could give them, unfortunately. But it is what it is. For the infrastructure needs in Georgetown, I'm glad to see some progress. We will want to see more. It's very expensive and time-consuming. I know on lots of streets where we need sidewalks or wider intersections, I've been serving with Councilman Warden on the TAC, and we have plans, what, Anthony, 20 years out, roughly? And some of the things we had planned for 10 years are now at the 15 mark, or they were supposed to happen last year, and they're still four years down the road. It's not fast, because it's a lot of money and it's a real pain to get some things through. But stick with us, and we'll keep trying, because it's important for safety and a host of other things, but.
Long, long, long ago, so, and they shouldn't respond right now, right? So we shouldn't address them right now with that stuff. You can't, I get it, but you're addressing them, and there's an ongoing issue that's been going prior to you even showing up in Jacksonville.
Absolutely. But for second safety entrance and things like that, we can only do what we can do.
Bring it to order, okay? We'll discuss it later. This can be discussed later. Mr. Warden.
Just, we had a, we'll talk some city business here. Councilman Jackson and I attended a strategic meeting of the Tourism Development Authority under the leadership of Anthony and his staff, and we had some interested parties and partners participate in it, and basically a brainstorm and talk about some things that we could do from a tourism development standpoint, and about a three-hour, three-hour session, and well worth it, although my butt did get a little tired at the end, but it was a good session, so. That's all I had, sir.
As Mr. Jackson pointed out earlier, our One City Moment for today comes from the African-American Read-In, and it was the 20th Annual Event. You can't see it on this first one, but Jamia Suter did lead this event for the year, which was phenomenal. She had support from Melody Strickland, from the city's supervisors, and from the media team. You will see in this picture Jacksonville's very own Crystal Blockett belting out the national anthem. If you didn't get a chance to see the African-American Read-In event, please pull it up online on the city website or on YouTube. You can, Crystal has a power inside of her that is incredible, and it's a blessing to have her included in those events. The event was excellent, the turnout was very strong. You will see a couple members of our communities and the school system being able to present and add their character to the events for the day, and then you'll also see, that's the back of Mr. Jackson's head there on the front, and Ms. Edwards also in attendance for the event. It was hosted at Jack Emmett this year. Last year, we were here in the city council chambers. This year, it's in Jack Emmett, which gives us the opportunity. which gives us the opportunity to share that facility with the members of our community, and, uh, overall, an excellent job, it makes you look forward to, uh, to the event next year, and to the opportunity to bring the community together for, uh, for an awesome time of fellowship, and to appreciate part of, um, the overall history of what we're completing here in Jacksonville. Uh, so awesome team, awesome event, uh, happy faces and, and good, uh, efforts of inclusion that we share throughout the community. Uh, great job to Jamia and to the team for this year's event. Thank you, Mayor.
This time, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Agreed.
Mr. Carter, do you have anything? I'm sorry, I forgot you were sitting over there. Anybody? Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second, anybody?
Second.
Go in favor.
Aye.
All right. All.